We're calling the work session on the Coffin County Boys Education Board. May 11, 2023, the last up least for your state education.
Thank you, sir. Our father, we thank you for that many blessings. Keep us from harm, teach us to be true to each other ourselves indeed. Lord, guide and direct us as we do the work of the Coffin County School System here tonight and just give us wisdom and discernment when we make decisions in the best interest of our students here in Coffin County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
And the new motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Josh, Mr. Wayne, Laverne, Jake, we're at school.
Yes, sir. We have Westside Elementary here for us.
That's fast. How are you doing, Laura? Thank you so much for having us tonight. We love Westside. I'm Amy Hughes, principal. It's best API in the whole wide world. Had a lot. So thankful to have her by my side. It's been great here. Make a great team, don't we, Sloss? So we're thrilled and honored to be able to tell you a little bit about our year this year at Westside Elementary School. We decided this summer that our theme was going to be keeping it old school at Westside. Since virtual learning, it felt like all the learning taking place was on a device. And there was like a disconnect to us between the teachers and the students. She'd walk by the room and all the children were on a computer and then the teacher was somewhere else. So we decided we wanted to stop and think it through. And we wanted to go old school this year by getting back to the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic, and putting pencil to paper, and spending time with the teacher. So that's where our theme came from. And we're going to talk more and tackle it. Technology is wonderful and so important. And we want to integrate those tried and true educational practices from when I was a student at Ambrose Elementary School and incorporate those other resources. So that was our theme. And if you look at the next slide, we decorated the school. Any of you old enough to remember Pac Man? We used bright neon colors. I love the 80s, I won't lie. This was fun for me. Some of our little teachers had no clue what was happening. They liked the colors. Anyway, we had bulletin boards all over the school that we liked to encourage and to be positive, that we have bright colors. Work hard, they come, is just one example. And then we had to have an 80s day. And we were keeping it old school at Westside. It was part of Red Ribbon Week. We incorporated it. But if those aren't the cutest children in the whole wide world, I don't know where you would find any cuter. But they had to last. So that's part, just want to share our theme with you. Now look at the leadership at Westside Elementary School. We read, we went old school on these pictures. You can see my old things there. Tracy, you remember those, don't you? So we had fun with the staff here in our open, opening faculty meeting. We had staff members who chose to participate. They sent us their high school senior pictures. And throughout our opening meeting, we would show them one and they would guess who it was. And some were really easy and some were not so easy to guess. But I am so honored and proud of the opportunity to be the principal at Westside. Here's my assistant principal Heather Lot back in the day.
The nanny.
The little 10-year age gap there. My dean of students, Dr. Trenton Bennett, thank you so much for that position. He is just a rock at our school and a blessing. He looks five there, but I didn't think that's his main picture. And then our academic coach, Ms. Kim Henderson, she's retiring this year after 31 years and we're so appreciative to her. But I am blessed with a wonderful team to support me and the teachers at our school. I love our teams, our grade level teams. That's just one team we have of our second grade teachers. Couldn't ask for people who love children more, work harder than what they do. I'm not going to call out the names, but you can see the number of teachers we have in each grade level. We do have a high population of students with disabilities. We have the only severe and profound class in the county, and we also have an autistic class in the county. And they really teach you a lot. So if you're ever out and about, Westside Drive or Gordon Street, stop by and come see our babies. But we love our teams and we're so thankful for all they do for our students. Those are our demographics. Not going to call those out to you, but I'll just say again, we love our Wildcats. So our school improvement plan, our first goal was to increase the percentage of students scoring from one level to the next. And I don't go through all that, but that was one of our goals. Preliminary scores are coming in. We just hold our breath. Ms. Lot gets those reports electronically and she'll say, Miss Hughes, they released the reading scores. And so we just get frantic and we're treading, we're ready to get all of them back. But if you'll go to the next slide, we're going to show you some of the things that we've been doing. I promise I won't read all of that to you. But just some of the things we've done this year that we really felt like would help us achieve that goal to increase our achievement. We've always, for years, we've said we're standards-based classrooms, but we did figure out that we had gotten away from teaching the language of the standard, defining the language of the standard in kid-friendly terms, posting those I can statements, essential questions. And key is having students communicating with each other and actively involved in the learning. We loved our student data notebooks this year for goal setting. That's something we got to tweak. We just started with it. But we want to empower our students to know what they know, what they need to know, and have them set goals for themselves. We've taught Saxon phonics with fidelity. And I just want to give a shout out to former Westside principal, Director of Leadership, Wendy Jowers, for all of the wonderful science of reading PL that she developed and put together and handed to the academic coaches so that they just had to present it. That's been very powerful. It's been eye-opening for me because it's a change in, a paradigm shift in how I think about reading. We emphasize developing lifelong readers in grades three through five. We loved training. We received Kevin Wazinski on 360 writing. It's a framework for writing that we can implement from kindergarten through fifth grade. So that's paper, pencil to paper, the writing. And then Ms. Lot would like to tell you just a little bit about the last bullet that I have highlighted about our mentors for our students with disabilities.
Yes. So in January, we started a mentor-mentee program for our third, fourth, and fifth grade students who are served with special services. So each of those students was paired with resource personnel, such as myself, to someone that doesn't have a home room. And we met with this student once a week for around 15 minutes. And that allowed us to really build a strong relationship with that student, to get to know their interests. We would look at their data, look at their grades, their attendance, see what they need extra help with, anything they were concerned about. And so it was just a really great opportunity today. It's been one of my favorite initiatives that we've done this year. And the little girl that I was paired with, and then Miss Hughes was paired with her BFF.
Didn't play that.
Didn't play that, but she's out right now. But little Ron paired with is a little fourth grader, and she's become so dear and dear to my heart. I just have fallen in love with her. What was really kind of neat about our pairing is within the past year, we both lost a parent. So I was really able, I feel like, to be there for her, knowing that she wanted to talk about her parent, and had expressed her feelings that she was having. And I was really just able to empathize with her because I was going through the same exact thing. It's a brother. And my heart just went out to her because I was having such a hard time, you know, as an adult and her as a child, having to go through that. It just broke my heart. But we love them, and this has been a really great opportunity for us to get to know our students better and to just provide them with some extra support and to let them know that there's just somebody else at the school besides their teacher who really cares about them, is in their corner, and wants the best for them. So it's just been a great experience. Thank you, Ms. Lot.
So something that we're really proud of in their data notebooks, our fourth and fifth graders have this student goal-setting form for the Georgia Milestones. I think we're so quick to, we keep all the knowledge. The teachers know everything. We know everything, but we forget the children need to know what's going on. So we have this form that we created and in around December, Ms. Lot, Ms. Lot, myself, and Dr. Bennett, we met with every fourth grader and every fifth grader. And we wrote down their Georgia Milestones achievement level, a score from the previous year. So fourth graders have to show growth. You know, you want to be better than you did the year before. We talked about your only competition is yourself. So we're not worried if you do better than Johnny, we want you to be better than you did last year, you know, be the best you can be. So we explained to them, there's four achievement levels, and they're really listening. I'm telling you, it was, it was just really neat to have those conversations with these little people, but they really cared. And I said, so you look, so I only needed two points to beat a three. I had a 523, and all I needed was a 523. I said, yes, man, I can do that. I said, you can. I said, you can absolutely do it. So we did that for reading and math. And then before the Georgia Milestones, the week before the Milestones, we went back. And we just really briefly met with each fourth and fifth grader and said, all right, let's go back and look at and tell them you said, you can do this. And, and just really do your best. We just want you to give it your best effort. And whatever you do, we're going to be so proud of because we know it was your best. So that's something I'm really proud of that we did this year and want to continue empowering students. So our second goal is to maintain our climate. We want to decrease discipline. We want happy people, happy teachers, happy parents, happy leaders. So the next slide shows some things we've done to keep people happy and celebrate. We've really tried to celebrate the National Recognition Days. Ms. Benita was so good to keep us reminded of those days. We have continued PBIS Tier One School Y. We use the aid modules as necessary for behavior, building relationships with students and parents, communicate. I tell the teachers, we got to communicate, communicate, communicate to keep from there being any confusion. It's so important to build those relationships. We've had incentive programs, our celebration assemblies, honors programs. Dr. Bennett spearheads student of the month. See the little children in front of the bulletin board. Each month, we choose a student of the month for good behavior and make it recognized. He does a luncheon in the media center and all. They go in there and they have a special meal. We also like to recognize our staff. I don't know if you know Catherine Gaskins and Cherry Burke there in the middle. But we do the Golden Apple Award, and we have a digital, a Google form that they fill out, and they select one's classified and one certified staff member. And we have a list of characteristics that you would like to have in the adults in your building. And they, they choose their peers, and so they get an actual little golden apple. And you would not believe how important that apple is, that big business. That golden apple and a gift card, and we post their picture on Facebook. And, you know, it means a lot to be acknowledged and to be recognized and appreciated. We recognized our media specialist in her para. The teachers have loved the Westside teacher spotlight up in the top, Ms. Consuela Merritt. Actually, one of our teachers told us about it. But each week on Facebook, we spotlight one teacher. And Ms. Henderson sends a form and they give her the information. That has been so powerful because it gives that teacher an opportunity to feel seen and appreciated. And I love to read all of their peers' comments and positive things from parents. So that's going to bless the most fun we had. It could have been a little dangerous. There's a video on Facebook on Westside Elementary School, if you'd like to see it. It was our first annual Westside faculty and staff egg hunt. I thought I'm going to have a grown-up egg hunt. And so we had, we had candy eggs and then we had prize eggs. And I said, it's voluntary, bring your basket, line up at 2:30. And if you want to participate, a lot of people lined up with their baskets, sent them to Ms. Lot, and they almost ran over me. That's okay. They had the best time afterward. They were laughing. They were already plotting and planning, next year, more prize eggs, we need to do this. So they have a very stressful job, and we want to do things to lighten that load and to let them bond and have some fun together too. So we did a lot of things, but those are just some cute things that we were really proud of. Reading. We want children to fall in love with reading. We don't want them to read because they have to. We want them to read because they want to. I want to thank the board and Dr. Leece and Mr. Mobley, Dr. Tucker, I'm not quite sure how it happened, but I love my mentor, Dr. Mark Wilson, that visits me monthly. And I was talking to him, I said, you know, our data shows third, fourth, and fifth graders, they're fluent, but they don't comprehend. They read fluently, but they're not comprehending, and I, I want some help. And I want them to read, the more they read, the better reader they become. And he recommended a book to me, The Book Whisperer. And so I bought a copy, I read it at home, easy read, and I bought a copy for our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers. But, but creating a classroom that's built around the love of reading. And, and I want the children just to be eager, it's a time to read, I'm going to get my book out now. So, but we do celebrate their reading and their accomplishments. We had a fall into reading dance party, and that shows the number of attendees in the fall. And then we just had the Wildcat carnival. That's Ms. Mackenzie Jones, our media specialist. She's still recovering because it was a may not attempt. Duncan booth, cotton candy, balloon toss. It was phenomenal. They had so much fun. So we just want to celebrate and we want them to love reading. Next, look. Cutest kids ever. Westside readers are leaders. Those are just a few pictures. Our teachers really did a lot of fun activities, like reading with a flashlight, having their stuffed animals. We had a book character dress-up day, all kinds of things to build that love of reading. I just wanted y'all to see how cute they are. So we've had reading, writing, and now arithmetic, back to the basics. They got to master those basic facts. We love Reflex Math. It's a great program. It requires them to know the fact families. So if we say they've mastered addition and subtraction, they know the addition and subtraction facts, and the same for multiplication and division. As they earn that distinction on the program, we recognize them as a math master. I call out their names on the intercom. Ms. Lot provides certificates. One of our teachers created a student fluency tracking form so that they can mark their accuracy every day. I know 70% of them. And in the next, oh, look, if I work real hard today, I might get up to 80% of them. So empowering them. And we went old school. We had flashcards and they wrote their multiplication. Y'all remember writing your multiplication back? I remember Ambrose, Mr. Conley. Did you have Mr. Conley, Tracy? Do you remember him? He had, he had a poster, and he had all our names on it, and he had zero, one, two, three across the top. And every Friday, he said, you know your facts, come on up. And he would flash them. And if you could get them all, you'd get what? A sticker. A gold star. And so we're doing things like that. Those old school things like that motivate children, they motivate us. So that's the math part. We really want us to boost math. And last but not least, I think that Brandon is, he really represents the heart of our school. I appreciate the county on the county website sharing Brandon's accomplishments. So we love all our students, and so many of them have done so many great things, but we want to end on this note. Brandon's been with us since kindergarten. He has made so much growth. Brandon Rappalo Lopez is a third grade student. He competed in the Georgia Academy for the blind regional Braille challenge this year in Macon. He competed with Braille readers from all over the state, and he took home third place in his level in the competition. And they were like eighth graders, like older children competing, and he's only been learning Braille for a while. He's, he's actually, he can read print, but he can also read Braille. He has very little vision. He has the neatest equipment. Allison Adcock is such an asset to our school, our teacher of visual impairments. He has the neatest equipment that he uses to magnify things, but he rocks, and we're so proud of him. And his para pro, Ms. Tracy Blackstock, has been with him since kindergarten. He has his own para pro. I want to make sure she got recognized because she has been his best friend. And as the years have gone by in the hallway, he's walking a little bit further ahead of her and a little bit further ahead of her. So she's building his independence. He has no fear. He is a true wildcat. And he shows the spirit of our school. And I thank you so much for all your support. We do love our students, and we thank you for all that you do to help us help our students do their best.
Thank you all. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the, let's see, minutes from last month's meeting. If you want to take a moment to look over those, any questions, comments, changes? Anything we need to do? All right, if not, then we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. We have the finance report. And we have Ms. Bradford here to present the financials. You want to walk us through those?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Okay, the first document you see is our financials through April 30th, 2023. So we began the school year in July with a fund balance of $25,704,651.01. Our total revenues as of July 30th are $59,382,576.10. And total expenditures as of April, $53,318,576.29. So for the end of the month, fund equity for April 30th, the balance is $31,768,650.82. The next document shows our comparison over a four-year period. You can see that our fund balance there at the $31,768,650.82. We're up from the previous month, and that's kind of, it's kind of fluctuated throughout the years there in just a small amount. The next document shows our, our year-to-date expenditures. The first section is our revenues there by the different categories, our state funding. And there you can see the total revenues at the $58,382,576.10, where we're at 77% of our revenues as of this point. The next section is our expenditures by the different functionaries of the school system. And you can see the, the ending total there at $53,318,576.29. So we're at 71% of our expenditures. The next document here is our SPOS. The revenue for the month of April is $769,470.80. And this is a reflection of last month, March, the revenues that it lags one month there. Any questions on any of those items?
Sir? Yes, we move along from this thing. Strategic planning update.
We've got the budget here.
Oh, oh, budget.
Yeah. At this, hold on. At this time, we'll call, hold on, let me take this call real quick. We're going to call the order, the, uh, budget hearing number two. So, Ms. Yon, you want to go ahead and start that?
Yes, sir. The document you, the document you see here is our tentative budget for Y24. We began the budget process back in January, meeting with principals, directors regarding their budgets and go over operations, student counts, and staffing numbers. So we came to you last month during April with our first public hearing, where we went through some of the detail of the revenue and expenditures. So here, this sheet kind of summarizes all those items. So the first column is our general fund. So you can see the total estimated revenues that we are estimating is at $79,593,907. And then the next, below that is our expenditures by the different functionaries, functionaries. And then you see that, that those estimated expenditures are at $79,593,397. So we are estimating a balanced budget for next fiscal year. We are estimating this point in time as it will end the school year at $26,905,000. That is an estimate. We'll be going through our end-of-the-year processes. So, you know, we'll confirm that balance as the months come and go down. We're just beginning that process. The rest of the spreadsheet reflects some of our federal funds is the next column. Those are estimates. And then our SPOS, expenditures, and revenues, and then our debt, which is our bond payments there. So we asked that, if possible, we could go ahead and advertise the budget on our website and then hold a, a special meeting to adopt the budget, hopefully in, in the end of May or first of April, I mean, first of June. Any questions as of the spreadsheet?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, we need to nail down the date for that. I've got proposed, uh, let's see, either May 26th, which is a Friday, and we could do the morning, or we could do lunch, whatever you all want to do. Or we could do the, if you've got a conflict with that, we could do June 5th, same thing, morning or lunch. It's usually a short meeting.
26th, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Be there anyway, get graduation and everything, right?
Yeah, I would prefer the 26th, if y'all can do that, that Friday, 26th. Y'all want to do an early morning or a noon meeting?
About 6:30 in the morning.
No, I got a, I got a meeting, I got a meeting at 10:00. Let's go run through about noon. So if we do, if we do get it early? Yeah. Y'all want to do 8:00 AM, is that?
26.
All right. You'll be good. 8:00.
26.
All right. All right, so 8:00 AM on 26th, that sounds great. All right. And at this time, we will move forward with the rest of the meeting, unless there's any public participation, anybody want to make any comments about the budget? Budget hearing number two. If there's no comments about the budget, then this will conclude budget hearing number two, and we will move forward. Yes, sir. It's, it's getting bigger. That's right. But it's a balanced budget, so that's what, that's what we like. So, all right. Next up, we have strategic planning update.
Good evening, everyone. We had our strategic plan presentation at our last meeting back in April. So today, we're coming closer to finalizing. Tonight, you have a draft copy in your folder, and I know the printout is a little bit small, so we have it on the, on the screen for your reference. Just have a physical copy, a hard copy in your packet. But tonight, we're just bringing the final, hopefully getting close to the final action plan and our performance measures and targets. At the last meeting, we read, we read through all the performance objectives, initiatives. Since our last meeting, we have met with our, our teams, got closer to getting everything finalized. We met with our planning team, reconvened with them to get their information, and also just present the progress that we've made since our meeting back in January. So for your reference, again, you have all the initiatives, the action steps, and how we'll complete those. If you look further in your packet, we also have our performance objectives to ensure that we are meeting every one of our initiatives and how we're measuring our steps and how we'll attack our, not attack, but actually approach our strategic plan. So you're welcome to review those. We've identified our people who are responsible for those. We've also identified our baseline data and set goals for every year of the five-year new plan. In our meeting yesterday, Mr. Um, in our meeting yesterday, um, Mr. Preston brought to our attention that we definitely wanna bring more attention to our parent engagement and set our guard high for our parents to be involved. And so that is the one thing that we will adjust in our, our final plan. Our target, um, we, our group that met, um, started with our baseline and we increased by two percent every year until we got to ninety-seven percent. But as we stated and, um, or we met with our groups on yesterday and with our follow-up, we will aim for a hundred percent for our parent engagement for our five-year plan. But, um,
I mean, I, I know that's a stretch, but I just felt like as, as bold as you were being about wanting to get into the nineties quickly on a lot of other efforts that's starting. I get it, I get it.
Hey, we can, we can ship for it, but we can definitely do that. We can aim to get a hundred percent participation. And really, our schools work really hard.
Done as a breakfast, wings at dinner.
And our schools work really hard with our parent-teacher conferences and most of them, um, get very close to one hundred percent if they don't get it. So I think it's something that we can definitely work towards and we'll do our very best to do so. But again, this is for your review and, um, we'll, we'll look for your feedback on if we need to move forward with this or make any more adjustments before we finalize our plan to get it rolling for our, our next school year.
I, I mean, I would like to hear from the group that's here, your experience working with the strategic planning group from GSBA. I don't know if anyone was here when we did the Ford initiative and experienced that, but just not comparing the two, but just did you feel like there was a good value brought to the table from our state association? I mean, did it?
I thought they did an excellent job.
Just remember, I'm on the, I'm on the, I'd just, I'd like to report back, you know?
They really did merging the, the former plan with the new plan. We spent two full days, which you were at some of that, I think. Uh, and I thought they did a great job of making sure that we don't throw out what we wanted to keep and then we inserted the new pieces. Cause there was a change in terminology using that Ford Next Generation group. They used different terminology than the GSBA used.
Sure.
And so they helped us bring it all together, so.
I appreciate the fact that they seem to be very familiar with our plan. Day one, um, I mean, they came in, they clearly spent some prep time. And, you know, not coming in, cause easily they could've just come in and worked the process.
Sure, sure.
But, but I just felt like they owned the plan coming in and they pointed out the great parts of it. And then I think they pointed out some pieces that we could be better, like the, the organization of the flow of the chart to make it read better, be better presentable to our stakeholders. So I, I thought it was great.
They did a really good job, really challenging us in areas, not just to be compliant, but, you know, to think about ways we could really, like, if this is what you wanna do, where you can go with it.
How, how are we getting that done?
Yeah, did a really good job of that.
That was good, here.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, ma'am. And at this time, we will move forward with the rest of the meeting. And, uh, we have next on the agenda are bid proposals and or quotes. You know, good, going back to the strategic planning update, I guess we'll come back to the board at the next meeting and ask for approval. That was our plan. Have the board actually take action on it. We didn't, we didn't do that just then. So we'll come back at the next board meeting and ask for, to adopt the plan.
Oh, we can move forward that tonight, Dr. It's the only thing that we need to change is that one hundred percent participation, that goal. But everything else is pretty much finalized.
All right.
It's just a, a, for now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
You wanna, you wanna continue looking at it?
Yeah, I would like the, the board to vote on it. Uh, that's, we've always done that. And, uh, I don't think we have that on the agenda for the, the next meeting. We'll come back at that call meeting when we take care of the.
May twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And do that piece.
Okay.
All right, in case y'all see something that you wanna change or whatnot. All right, uh, on the agenda next, we have the consent agenda or the, the items that are proposed to go on the consent agenda. Purchases. And school nutrition rollover bids. Ms. Lewis is here to explain the rollover bids.
These are the bids that you previously voted on. We just have to renew our contracts with them. We have a four-year option to renew. So these are bids you already approved, but we're just asking you to approve the rollover so that we can continue to operate on those bids with Flowers Bacon Company and Williams Institutional next school year. And from Williams, we're buying paper, milk and food products. And from Flowers, we're buying all of our bread products. So I'm just asking for you to approve the companies have already agreed to roll over one more year with us.
The only, the only thing I would ask is if we could split them. Split the two out separate on the regular agenda. I need to abstain from, please, do it. I do business with that one. Yeah, currently we have it on the consent agenda for the next meeting. Uh, so we will move those bids to the, uh, regular meeting?
Yeah, I just need to abstain from that.
So if you just abstain, that'll be fine. All right, we'll leave it on, well.
Just move, we can put it on separate. Yeah, we'll just put it on the week.
All right. When we get to the regular meeting, we'll just adjust the agenda then, reflect that. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the, let's see. Let's see. The indoor synthetic field for the NJRO TC facility. You'll see we have the, uh, proposal on the state contract. From Sports Turf is the company that installs, but Astro Turf is the company that we'll be purchasing through. And so you'll see the, uh, contract amount, six hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, which is right at what we were estimating of coming in at, the architect estimated, a bond of eight thousand and nine dollars. Any questions about that? We did meet with the NJRO TC instructor at Coffey High. And, uh, we, uh, she was, she approved and was part of the conversation about the surface and such as that. And then we also, athletic director was in the meeting and, and we're gonna line it for soccer also. So there will be margins for indoor soccer also on the field. All right.
I guess the only thing I'd ask is if we amend that, but it, it does point out that we're gonna include that striking for the, for the other field sports.
I'll put that under the, uh, summary in the meeting. It says the NJRO TC instructor at Coffey High participated in selection process and provided guidance on the margins of the surface. But I'll tell you what we'll do. I, I will put this on, on, we'll just put this a first read tonight and we'll come back and I'll get with that vendor and make sure they put that on the document and, uh, and have that resubmitted to us with that in the document. And so, uh, if it's okay with the board, I'll come back at that, uh, call meeting and ask for approval of it. So I think that's a good point. I wanna make sure that's included, that everything is, is included in there. So we will, we'll take this off for approval tonight and we'll come back at that, uh, our agenda for that call meeting and grow it, but, uh.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't mind approving it with the amendment and you go out to the vendor.
I, I do have, I, I, I wanna make sure that's in there and I do have a question about it myself. So, uh, I just wanna make sure.
It's going into the record. We're not gonna, you know, we're probably this thing's gonna be there long after we're done.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to pull this or I'm gonna pull it from, for a vote and then we'll bring it back to y'all with that in there. All right? So, but that gives us a good idea of what the, what the, uh, cost is. And that was all budgeted, so anyways, all right. Uh, Oki Finne, so will you pull that off the consent agenda? All right, great. Oki Finoki Reza contract FY twenty-four. We have, uh, the Reza contract. It's been the same for the last twenty years, I think it is. So, uh, their prices have not gone up and we appreciate the support they provide. So if there's no objections, we'll place that on the consent agenda. And then the twenty-three, twenty-four student handbook. Mr. Mobley?
So the changes that were made that we presented to you guys last month, those have stayed the same. Um, after Mr. Cottigan, Cottigan reviewed, he proposed a change and I'm just wanna read it to you. It's nothing major, but we defined a couple of terms. Just for clarity for parents, under the discipline portion, we defined expulsion, long-term suspension and short-term suspension. Cause sometimes with parents, those can get a little confusing, so that should help them. We also, uh, this year's tribunal training, Mr. Jimmy Stokes pointed out, uh, he encouraged us to include in our forbidden item section, under drugs. Uh, he asked us to include THC and CBD, cause there's a, some new jargon and, and we did include those also since your last, um, the revision prior to tonight. Other than that, uh, everything's the same as we presented. We just asked for, uh, for your approval of the handbook so that we could get it to Brandon. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And we are, let's see. Make sure we have that right. Student handbook. Yes, sir, I was, when we talked about student handbook, I, I was, I was looking at something on here. Uh, so we're gonna come back at the.
It's totally up to you guys.
Yeah, cause we've got a timetable to work with here. Robin, what was the drop dead date for getting this thing approved?
We needed it approved before the June meeting.
All right. All right.
In order to get it to Brandon.
I know, but I, I'm gonna have to buy y'all a big breakfast. All right, but we are starting at eight, aren't we? That's right.
Move it back to six-thirty.
So we'll have, all right. Great. So at this time, we go to executive session. Need a motion to, to take a decision?
I believe we can do it.
Please. Mr. Preston, Mr. Wayne?
To discuss.
To discuss personnel and the employment or, uh, disbar action or evaluation of employees, also real estate. All right. Thank you.